Called order the Board of County Commissioners, special meeting June 10th, 2014. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute thy land and state of America through the citizens of our perfect country among thy儿女.
First item on the agenda is to approve the special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll take a motion to recess from the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Called order the Grant County canvassing board. First item on that agenda is approve or disapprove for 2014, the primary election results.
Chairman Commissioners, I present to you guys, to the board, the results of the primary election, 2014 primary election. I think the biggest thing for this election was the low turnout that Grant County had for election. Grant County is usually one of the highest voter participation across the state, and this time, we just didn't show up to vote at the polls. Election day voting was about 12 percent, which is what we usually do on election day for any election that we have. But our normal range for early voting is anywhere in the 20 to 25 percent range, and for early voting, we had a dismal, you know, we'll round it up and call it 10 percent, and it may not have even been 10 percent. I'm at a loss at why we didn't vote, or anything like that, but other than that, the election was pretty smooth, no issues. Everything was run well by our office. My staff did an excellent job of preparing for the election. And once this has been set in the books and approved by the commission, we'll start working on our general election.
Stand for questions. Questions for Rob? Which precinct, or which area had the highest turnout when it came to your centers?
Well, our voting centers, the Women's Club, the Conference Center, and the Baird Community Center. Those are always our busiest, and they turn out to be our busiest again. The Women's Club is always our busiest because it's right in the middle of town.
And that's on election day?
That's on election day, yes, sir.
Well, I just want to say we really appreciate you guys, all the hard work you put in, and I wish there'd been more participation, because that's when you have a representative form of government, and you don't go out and voice your opinion, then you have to live with what other people have decided. So, that being said, I'll take a motion to approve or disapprove the primary election results.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the primary election results.
Second.
There's a motion, second, to approve the 2014 primary election results. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I take a motion to adjourn the Grant County canvassing board.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. At this time, I take the motion to adjourn the county commissioner meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll call the order the Board of County Commissioner work session. First item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The purpose of the work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regards to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1301, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. First item on the agenda is to review the June 12th, 2014, regular meeting agenda. Abby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we'll have a public hearing. Actually, we're going to have several public hearings, three in all. Under the first public hearing, it's going to be a discussion of the Viva Santa, Vida, excuse me, Viva Santa subdivision, I don't think that's...
Viva Santa?
Yeah, Viva Santa Rita subdivision, that's probably my typo. Community area improvement district assessment levy ordinance. So this is the last steps, or the last step in our moving forward with that improvement district. If you look behind the tab, the first tab, you'll see a memo from Dory, and she's explaining what's happening in this step, which is this, that we're going to adopt this ordinance and move forward with the improvement district. And there is an ordinance behind that memo, and that details these last steps.
What's the ordinance on the front? What's the ordinance on the front?
This...
We have an ordinance, so we have two orders?
It should be the...
Oh, the same one.
Maybe it's just a double copy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It should be a memo, and then the first ordinance behind it is what you're going to adopt.
Yeah, we've got two.
And that will begin imposing the levy. Oh, there's Dory.
I wanted to show you that it was advertised in the Daily Press, that's why the second one, and that it was posted in the county clerk's office.
Okay, that reflects that?
One ordinance.
Correct.
Thank you, Dory.
Thank you, Dory.
Dory, before you go off, they're going to have a 45-day grace period. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that is correct. For those that want to pay in full, we'll allow 45 days to come in and do that. The actual billing will commence until August the 1st. And I can only tell you what I've been told, it could be close to, in a range of $8,000 to $10,000 that we might collect within the 45 days.
Okay.
Then we're going to have a second public hearing. And this is, let's see. For the approval, first, the discussion of the adoption of an ordinance dedicating in quarterly installments an amount applicable to a gross receipts tax of 1/12 percent applied to the taxable gross receipts reported during the prior fiscal year by persons engaged in business in the county to the newly created Safety Net Care Pool Fund. I believe you all are aware of the legislation that was passed this last session, and this is a requirement that came down out of that session. I wanted to make it clear that this ordinance is not imposing a new tax. It's just us dedicating funds that we already have to a new pot. It used to be the Salk Community Provider Fund, and now it's going to be the tongue twister, the Safety Net Care Pool Fund.
Yeah, what it actually is, just to put it bluntly, is the state has chosen to take 1/12 of gross receipts away from the county and to use it for state programs that used to be county programs. If you just want to put it blunt, that's what they've done.
Then we will have one more public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions and imposing fireworks restrictions. This is the same proclamation that we've been adopting for the past several years and have also adopted this season. We just adopted one at our last regular meeting, but our time, they only are effective for 30 days, so this one's going to run out before we have another meeting, so that's why it's back on here. And the language is exactly the same as in the past. Then I'll jump down to financial reports, and, Commander, we are on section nine, paragraph nine, B.
John's gone.
Was fast.
Are you helping her out?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the expenditure report is for the payroll dates of May 11, 2014 through May 24, 2014, and it's for a period ending of June 9, 2014. And this total of expenditures for this timeframe is $757,208.24. And included into these expenditures are $132,986, which was the purchase of the storage tanks.
The fuel tanks are in there?
Yes.
And we're expecting to be reimbursed for that in the next 30 days or so?
Yes, we already submitted the reimbursement.
Right, yeah. Okay. Now, it's okay. Okay, so move into the cash flow report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll begin with the general fund, and this is for the period ending April 30, 2014. And the revenues to date are $6,933,231, with transfers of $964,087, with operating expenditures to date of $2,701,789, I think I said that wrong, and salaries and benefits to date of $4,829,318, which leaves us with an actual cash balance as of April 30 with And we have projected transfers in of $385,222, and additional, no, I'm sorry, it's not additional, it was budgeted, but it's projected transfers out of $1,083,434. And projected revenues through June 30 should be $3,706,867, with projections of operating expenditures through June of $614,826, and salaries and benefits of $1,154,060. And that should give us a cash balance of $2,126,761, with the surplus of $21,419.
Okay.
And the road fund, we have revenues to date of $931,101, transfers year to date $251,358, operating expenditures of $251,76, salaries and benefits to date of $1,048,940, with projected transfers in of $251,358, and projected revenues of $122,696. We have projected operating expenditures of $102,934, and projected salaries and benefits of $244,140, but the projected cash balance of $177,079, with a surplus of $46,144. And in the correction fund, revenues to date are $805,98, and transfers year to date are $743,77, operating expenditures to date are $626,342, and salaries and benefits to date are $1,617,753. Currently, we have a negative cash balance of $695,514, but that's because I need to post the remaining transfer from the general fund into the correction fund, which is $1,043,77. The projected revenues are $238,522, with expenditures of $135,574, and salaries and benefits of $395,938, leaving us with a projected cash balance of $54,572.
Any questions on the cash flow reports?
No, I just like to just bar the, I think it looks good, the bar that I got. Yeah, that's really nice.
Problem is, is secure school funds weren't authorized for this year, so that's about a half million to the road department. So we're going to have to come up with that out of general fund, or elsewhere. It was only reauthorized for one year, so could be scary.
We don't know how much yet, do we?
Anyway, hey, Abby.
Thank you, Commander. Under new business, item D, we have recognition of Cobra and Silver Baseball and Softball State Champions.
Hey!
And under E, we have approve/disapprove airport emergency plan, Class III airport.
Quite a document.
It is, pretty large. This is something that Justin has been working on with the FAA, and we now have an approved, a new airport emergency plan approved by the FAA, and we just need to put it in front of you all to adopt now.
Yeah.
It's pretty healthy, so. If you have specific questions, I think Randy could be helpful, and Justin, of course, who has worked on this closely. Under F, we have meetings for delinquent solid waste accounts.
Under delinquent? Not just delinquent, have the money.
This is the normal process that Ted Martinez goes through when he finds delinquent accounts. I believe he does this on a quarterly basis, and he will, he goes through all the accounts, he has a public hearing so that the public, anyone that's on the list can come in and object, or explain why the bill is incorrect. And he did have one person come in and make an objection, and he addressed that issue, and it was an error on our part, so he fixed that and took him off the list. And this is his final list, and he's putting it before you to approve. And after you approve, then he'll file the meetings in the clerk's office. Under contract, item G, we have approve/disapprove the DWI grant contract. This is the grant agreement for the DWI program, and this year Cindy was awarded $76,928, and it's to be used for her program. Her program is described in detail under Exhibit A, and then her budget is under Exhibit C, if you'd like to take a look at those. And Cindy's also here today, if you have any questions for her.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Do you have anything for us?
This is the agreement that you approved back in January or February, nothing's changed on it. I probably will be making, at some point, some budget adjustments, because some things have changed, but other than that, everything's the same. We do prevention, the corrigentinas, out of that, and treatment. So everything's the same. Our treatment funds, you know, our treatment, they ran out of treatment funds this year, like in January, and recovery management has been doing services free since then, and so we're waiting for the July 1st so we can start paying them again.
Cindy? Maybe we'll talk about looking at closely prevention and treatment, and see how the money is being spent. I'm all for prevention, always have been, but sometimes you look at the problem that we have with the alcohol and drugs that we have in our community, and some of those folks that we need to be treating, they're beyond prevention.
Oh, I agree.
And it's just something, we maybe look at our numbers as far as dollars, and see if in fact, maybe, I don't know if we can get any more, you fought real hard to get WAPAP, we did, and I think that the other folks in Santa Fe did, but it's just something I'd like for you to analyze really closely this year, and look at the prevention versus treatment. Mike and I went to Albuquerque along with some other folks this last week, and it was interesting to see what they had to say about that. And so it's something that we may want to look at.
Well, my planning council meeting today on the agenda is the area of prevention and shifting where, at what age, we do prevention. So I have been looking at that, honestly, I'm seeing the difference in our offenders.
I'm going to need more dollars to move.
I agree. I'm trying to, you know, the prevention is before they get to that bad point. We're trying to prevent them getting really bad by the education and that, so we are putting more money into the treatment. Know that our offenders, why the treatment monies have gone up is because more of them are in the intensive outpatient, which is 82 sessions versus 12 sessions, and they require it. They're, you know, they're heavy alcohol users, and so they're requiring more treatment. With the prevention, we're trying to prevent them from getting to that point, but we are shifting it, and shifting some programs that we do, and that's on the discussion today.
If you look at recidivism, that'll tell you that maybe you need more dollars in treatment, because that's what's happening.
Oh, I agree. And we, every year, we give them a little bit extra than what the contract calls for, but then we run out, so we are looking at that. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any of those funds that are spent on, say, those 82 sessions, are there monies collected back from the individuals?
There haven't been, but that's what we discussed this last time. I just had a meeting with recovery management, who we contract with, and we will be getting monies from requiring them to pay a small amount also.
A portion, yes.
Yes, just a small portion that can go back into it, yes. We haven't in the past. See, they've been trying to, we've been dealing with, knowing that this insurance thing has been coming up, and we've been told, oh, that'll take care of it, that'll take care of it, you won't have to have as many funds going into that, but it's not going to be that way. We've found that their deductible won't even, won't even start until they're almost done with treatment, and so, and a lot of our offenders can't afford to pay any kind of copay, but some of them can, and those that can, we are going to start requiring them to pay a copay.
And some of them just assume go to jail.
Yes. Yeah, and we would not stop treatment if they can't afford to do it, we wouldn't, you know, it's going to be based on certain criteria, so we'll make sure they get the treatment. Going to jail isn't going to help that.
Mike's got a program there, too, we'll get him next time.
I know he does, yes, yeah. Okay, is that it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Abby?
The next item is H, approve/disapprove the Second Amendment to a joint powers agreement with the City of Baird for chip ceiling. And this is an agreement that we've done for the last couple of years with Baird, and we're just going to do the same thing again this year, they received funds again from the DOT. And I believe Earl's got this, that project and the next project, which is the, item I, the agreement for chip ceiling between the County of Grant and the Town of Hurley, it's the same, the same source of funds from DOT, and we're going to work with the Town of Hurley to help them also with their chip ceiling. And then we'll be reimbursed, reimbursed out of those appropriations that they receive.
I know that our chip ceiling machine is getting a little long in the tooth, it's what, about 40 years old now?
I was kind of wondering with all these extra jobs that we're doing.
Yeah, we're going to have to revisit some of these programs, see if we can't figure out a way to replace that machine, because it's getting to where it's broke down a lot, and we're out there, these other jobs, and...
And our next item, J, is the agreement for professional services with the Hughes Law Firm. This is in regard to an agenda item that's coming up in the resolutions, the whole harmless gross receipts tax and gross receipts revenue bonds that we're considering, that the county's considering. And the Hughes Law Firm has significant experience in this area, and they're willing to provide services to us for approximately $25,000, which, in my opinion, is a very good deal for such a large project. The next item is K, it's a one-year extension of an agreement with High Desert Humane Society, and this is, we still work under the same terms that we have for the past three years, we're just extending the expiration of the contract. Under resolutions, item L, we have the County of Grant request for a cooperative agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation, under the cooperative agreement to patch roadway where needed. This and the two items following this are the annual requests for cooperative agreements that Earl prepares with the DOT. And the first request is for, that's under item L, single penetration chip seal with shoulder work and drainage improvements and striping for racetrack road, the beginning of pavement starting at US 180 intersection southeast, 3.6 miles to Santa Clara city limits. The Santa Rita Mine Road, starting at the beginning of pavement at New Mexico 356 east, .77 miles to Mine Gate, then Tabor Avenue, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of Apache Street South, .35 miles to the end of the cul-de-sac. Then Tyrone Mine Road, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of US 90 west, .42 miles to Mine Gate. Then Vicente Place, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of Lance Drive north 450 feet to the end of pavement at intersection of Country Club. And the estimated project cost is $194,735, and we're requesting $146,051 from DOT, and then the county will match the other 25 percent in-kind for $48,684. Then, under item M, we have another, the same type of cooperative, request for cooperative agreement with DOT. And for this project, it's to install a concrete low wire crossing with footings and drainage improvements on Arena Road, beginning of pavement starting .15, .15 miles east of US 180 intersection, 200 feet to the end of pavement, and install, oh, and install 90 feet of six-foot metal culvert with concrete head walls and drainage improvements on Gauge Road, beginning of pavement starting 2.5 miles east of the Gauge Road's Separ, Separ intersection, 50 feet to the end of pavement. The estimated cost for this project is $76,845, which we're requesting 75 percent off from DOT at $57,634, with our in-kind match at $19,211, $211. And then the last request is to patch roadway where needed and lay single penetration chip seal with drainage improvements and striping for Apache Street, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of Bonita Avenue east, .65 miles to end of pavement at intersection of Tabor Avenue. Country Club Road, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of Vicente Place east, .45 miles to end of pavement at intersection of Tabor Avenue. Lance Drive, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of Ridge Road east, 1.02 miles to the end of pavement at intersection of Tabor Avenue. Arena Road, beginning of pavement starting at intersection of New Mexico 211 north, .5 miles to end of pavement at the end of pavement. The cost of this project is estimated at $78,376, of which we're requesting $58,782 from DOT, with the county's in-kind match at $19,594. Then, item O, we have a notice of intent to adopt a county gross receipts tax ordinance, and this is the item I was talking about earlier when I was discussing the contract with the Hughes Law Firm. I believe you're all familiar with this item, and we've been, there have been discussions of it for a while. I did ask Mr. Sari to come here today because he has worked on this for a while and has a substantial knowledge of it. I don't know, would you like Mr. Sari to come up and talk about it?
Sure. Do we have to...
Do we have to pay?
Yeah.
Please turn on.
Set on.
By the way, not sure.
Yeah. Great, please. I learned that from somebody. Yeah, this is, I mean, the gross receipts tax ordinance is something we've been discussing back two years ago in the legislative session.
How long ago?
The whole time it's been taken. Yeah. Two years ago, not this legislative session, it just passed in January, it was the previous year's legislative session, legislators chose to pass a bill to take away the hold harmless. What the hold harmless was is when the state of New Mexico decided not to tax food and medical anymore, groceries and medical, they entered into agreements with the municipalities and counties to hold them harmless. Because it was going to be a financial burden on them to not receive those tax dollars anymore, the state decided that they would make those monies up out of the 5% compensating taxes that the state receives and other taxes. They would pay back these counties and municipalities for the money they would have received. Because there was still a requirement by the grocery stores and the medical professionals to report their revenues, they just did not have to pay any tax on them. But they still had to make the reports so the state would know. For Grant County, that means approximately $350,000. For the town of Silver City, I've heard numbers between $1.7 and $1.9 million a year. It just depends on the year. They're more of a property, a gross receipts tax-based entity. We're more of a property tax-based entity on the county side. So, two years ago, when they took away this hold harmless, what they did is they took counties and municipalities over a certain population, and they put in a clause that for the next 15 years, they'll slowly take away the hold harmless each year, and gave them the ability to enact 3/1/8 gross receipts tax to make up for it. For the other counties and municipalities that didn't hit the requirements, they told them that you can continue to keep your hold harmless, but if you enact any of the gross receipts, 1/8ths, 2/8ths, 3/8ths, you immediately lose your hold harmless. You don't tailor it off after 15 years, it's gone. The instant the gross receipts tax becomes active, you lose the hold harmless. So, in the last legislative session, that just passed in January, there was probably about six or seven bills that came out that the legislators deemed that this was just a huge financial windfall for the counties and municipalities. And so they're trying to take away the ability to enact the gross receipts tax now that you get to make up the hold harmless. In the case of Silver City, I know that it's, for the 1/7 to 1/9, they lose 3/8s brings them about $900,000. So only losing a million dollars, I guess, is a windfall, is what the state considers. So, there's a big push to take that away. In this upcoming legislative session, it's going to be a 60-day session, we were already told in the last session that there's going to be another big push to take away the hold harmless, extra gross receipts tax, but still remove the hold harmless from those counties and municipalities. Because the state feels as though they've paid enough to the counties and municipalities. Counties and municipalities are just overrun with funds. The state is hurting with money, and so they feel this is just a handout, and they're wanting to take it away. So what some of the counties have started doing, and municipalities, they've been enacting these gross receipts tax and bonding against them for projects that benefit their communities. That way, the gross receipts tax can't be taken away by the state as long as it is encumbered under a bond or some kind of debt. But we know, like I said, the talk was, there's going to be a bunch of bills again this year to take it away. Senator, Representative Harper was one of the ones that really pushed for it. I've spoke with him personally at the end of the session. He said he's bringing back a better bill that'll be stronger. When we did the sole community provider bill, they tried to sneak in some of the hold harmless stuff into the sole community provider bill because it was, the hold harmless bills were dead, and they knew the sole community provider bill was going to have to move through and get passed. So, it's really at risk, these tax. And for Grant County, what it means is, PILT funding has already been talked about today, that PILT may or may not be reauthorized every year. It was luckily reauthorized this year in the farm bill. But the farm bill was done for five years, they only reauthorized PILT for one of the five years. The other four years of the farm bill, it's not. They're trying to put it into the omnibus budget bill, I think is what they call it. It's, you never guarantee. A loss of PILT to Grant County means you lose about $1.6 to $1.8 million. I've said it in the past when I was county manager, the biggest department is the sheriff's office because of the size of the county and the public service need. If you were to get rid of 20 sheriff's deputies, that brings you $1.2 million. You're still short, and you would cut his department in half and not make up what PILT loses.
Probably have you county manager right now.
Yeah.
I don't even know why you're not...
But the reality is, is there's nowhere else, I mean, the reality is, is the only places that you can take a $1.8 million hit is in the jail and the sheriff's office. You look at it, you would have to get rid of the entire clerk's department, including the clerk, and shut their doors, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, and part of the manager's office to make up the money you would lose from PILT. And that can't be done. And so, even if you went into each one of those departments and took away one person, you're getting, if you took away one person from each of those, you're getting roughly about $120,000, $160,000. That's nothing compared to the 1.8. That's, the reality of it is, public safety is going to be hit. The jails are still going to have to have people there. It becomes a huge liability if you reduce people from the jail, but you're now getting into a million dollars of losses. I mean, it's the unfortunate reality is, public safety is going to be the hardest hit. So if you enact these 3/8s of gross receipts tax that are given to you, this can be used for the general purposes to make up for if PILT is lost and PILT becomes a capital fund. Gives you a lot of options. It gives you the ability to continue to service the public. And 3/8s is a third of a cent, a little over a third of a cent on every dollar. It's 3 cents on $10, it's 37 cents on $100. If somebody spends $100, it's 37 cents, is all it is. It's not a lot of money. People are spending more money than that in the bubble gum machines out front here. There's the reality of it. So...
Any questions for John? We appreciate you coming in and taking time out of your day.
Yeah. Good job. No. Good job. Well, you know, we know that the funding from the federal government's, at best, uncertain and inconsistent nowadays, and that the state funding for infrastructure is woefully inadequate anymore. So, once again, we're stuck in a position where we either take care of ourselves, or we do away with a lot of the services the county presently provides. Now, so we've talked about three different funds today. We've talked about hold harmless, you said that's about 350. We've talked about secure rural schools, 400, 500, something like that. And we've talked about PILT, which is 1.7. So if you add those together, we're about 2.4?
2.4.
Yeah. And that could really upset the apple cart. So, anyway, thank you very much. You know, yeah. And secure rural schools isn't as, I mean, it's a loss to lose any money at the county level, even a dollar. But secure rural schools, probably six years ago, before the, the, all the funding came in from the state to try and, or the federal government, to try and make everybody whole, get through the hard times. The secure rural schools was like $100,000 that was split between the schools and the county. We rarely received any money from it. It was about 20,000 or 30,000 is what the road department would get. Then they fully funded it for a few years, so we went up to 500,000, and it tapered off each year. And what we did is, we tried to use that money more for replacing equipment, and so that's what we were able to do, is we replaced all the blades, we replaced the loader, we bought some trucks for them. And so we did one-time expenditures instead of recurring expenditures. So the loss of that money isn't as detrimental as the loss of PILT. Yes, it does take a hit to the general fund because we've been allowed to not have to push as much money down to the road department, but, like I said, most of that money was spent using for one-time purchases instead of recurring funds. We used it for that purpose because we knew it would go away at some point in time. Unfortunately, the way things grow and the services needed grow, you have no choice but to use some of it for operating. Well, we still have to replace the sheriff's patrol units, we still have to replace the detention center's units for transferring prisoners. We still have a chip ceiling machine that's 40 years old we've got to replace. No, I mean, yeah, no, exactly. Thirty-year-old dump truck. So that money being gone, that means immediately we have to start paying for that out of general fund. No, exactly. Everybody here knows what that means. Yeah, exactly. No, you'd have to buy, and a sheriff's vehicle is about $40,000 to $50,000. They put the bells and whistles on it. Yeah, when they're equipped. Cost you $20,000 for the vehicle and about $20,000 to $30,000 for the equipment that has to go inside it.
I was asking for a handout, that's in lieu of taxes for the federal government for the land that's, the forest out here that belongs to the, or is taken care of by the federal government. So it's, it's not a handout. It's in lieu of taxes, so...
Yeah, and it's actually reduced by about $600,000 before they even get to the ceiling. The way the formula for PILT works is, Grant County qualifies for about $2.8 million in PILT, the ceiling for Grant County, because of population and the acreage, is $2.2 million. So they take it from 2.8 down to 2.2. Then they take away the secure rural schools funding we receive from that money, so that drops it down into the 1.7, 1.8 range. And so really, Grant County, if fully funded PILT is $2.8 million, but because of the way the formula works, we lose a million dollars of PILT every year, even at a fully funded, what the government calls fully funded. Yeah, I understand. I just thought what fully funded meant last year at the legislature. It means we promised we might try to find some money. Fully funded and unfunded get used the same.
Thanks, John.
Yep. Thank you.
Abby, do you have anything else to add to that?
I don't, I think Mr. Sari covered it. If you all have questions in between now and Thursday, please let me know. If I don't have the answer, I'll get with Mr. Sari.
We'll talk around here on this so the public can come and give a fair opinion.
Again, this is just the first step to approve, publicate, or publishing notice that we're, that we intend to adopt an ordinance. So we'll have the normal two weeks of publication, and we'll have a draft in the clerk's office for the public to review. We also have a draft behind the resolution that you can take a look at for yourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is P, and that is removing the light duty policy from the Grant County Detention Center. I discussed this briefly at our last meeting in county reports, that the cost of the light duty program in the jail is prohibitive, really. What we're having to do, or have figured out what we have to do, is because we have to fill those posts at the jail, we, although we can place, sometimes we can place an injured officer into, you know, a light duty position, we still have to hire a temporary to fill that post. So we're paying for two employees for one position, and that has really increased our costs in the jail. And so it's my recommendation, and I don't know if Mr. Corio has anything to add, but it'd be my recommendation that we do remove the policy just for the detention center, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, I fully support the removing of the light duty policy. Again, I think it is cost prohibitive, as Abby was saying. Not only do we have to fill the part-time position, but it's the length of time, it's the individuals, the longer they remain on the light duty issue, the more cost prohibitive it becomes. And there's also the issue of the overtime. Whenever we don't fill that post, or we're needing individuals, we don't just fill the temporary position just to fill with a body. We have to also look at the individuals that are going to fill those light duty positions or temporary positions, and we want to have people that are qualified and that want to do the job. And when we don't find them and they only stay a short period of time, it just sets everything back, and that continues to cost us money out of the budget. So at this time, I do support that. I do support removing that policy from the detention facility.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Our next item is Q, authorizing, a resolution authorizing approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Viva Santa Rita subdivision community area improvement district assessment. And this is the same subdivision improvement district that you're going to approve on Thursday, and this piece is that we're trying to get a loan from NFA to cover the cost of the project, so that the county is not out the money while we're waiting for the assessment money to come in from the residents.
The assessment money makes the payment.
Correct.
Plus the interest.
And Anthony's been working on this. I don't know if you have anything to add about the application?
I really don't have too much to add, except for, New Mexico Finance Authority's been pretty flexible with us. They told us, they really hadn't done a project like this, and so, but they said they'd work with us, see if we can make some type of arrangements. The only portion I think that they were wanting is that the county actually ensure that they're, that the loan will be paid. We're expecting revenues from residences directly, and so we're going to use the state ship gross receipts tax to try and back that up, so. So other than that, I think it's actually gone pretty smoothly. And I told them that we're probably going to have more than one of these, so we want to get the first one right, so. Anyway, that's all, that's all I have to add.
Exactly. Budget adjustments.
Then we have item R, right, the resolution for budget adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to request that a budget adjustment be approved at the regular session meeting, which will include cash transfers of $69,000 out from the general fund into the airport action development plan. It's a grant that we received, and we need to match it by $10,000. And a $50,000 match for the fuel farm, for the storage tanks, the fuel tanks. And an additional $9,000 into the shooting range for additional operating expenses at the shooting range. I would also like to mention that there's an increase of $390,093.80 in revenue, and this is all for new grants, which is the 2012 library deal bonds, the 2012 Stone Garden grant, and the DARE program, and the adult court program, which is the alcohol and drug monitoring. And it also includes the fuel farm, again, and the airport development plan. And that would also include $964,393.80 in expenditures, which again is for the grants that I just previously mentioned.
Chairman, then I have an additional resolution to add. It'll be S, item S, and I've given you a handout because I just completed it. Did you find that resolution?
Yeah.
It'll be a resolution approving voluntary recognition of a petitioning bargaining unit that includes the non-provocationary bus drivers employed by Grant County, New Mexico, under Cory Caminos. And just a little background, I think you all have a general idea of what's happening there. The Cory Caminos bus drivers have petitioned to become a bargaining unit, and we're at the stage where, and just so you know, I've looked into the, I've researched it, and I've talked with outside of attorneys, and it does appear to be a legitimate group for a bargaining unit. And right now, we need to decide, or you need to decide, whether you would like to voluntarily recognize the unit, or whether you would like to leave it up to the employees to have an election. My personal feelings were that we should leave that up to the employees. We don't know, we don't know what they might decide the day of the election. But you can also voluntarily recognize the unit, and then they don't have to have an election. And if you approved the resolution that I've put before you, you would be recognizing the unit. If you disapprove it, then the employees would move forward with the election.
Do we have to provide the election form, or do they do it on their own?
Do we have to provide the election form, or do they do it on their own?
The director at PLRB will coordinate that with me and the union. I think what we discussed was that we would do a mail-in election, so it's not going to be very cumbersome. They would just send out, we could post notice, send out ballots. There'd be timeframes for everything, which need to make sure there's sufficient notice to the employees and that they receive their ballots, and they would vote that way. Then I would go up to Albuquerque for the opening, for the tally after the election, and...
How many people are we talking about?
Twenty people. It'd be a small unit. The reason it wouldn't be combined with our current union is because they aren't similarly situated, and that these employees are part-time, grant-funded employees. So, we don't have the same bargaining power at the table that we normally do with regular full-time employees. Because the funding is difficult, we have to get, to increase raises, give raises or something like that, we'd have to go to first the authority board under the JPA that governs Cory Caminos and request the raise, and then we'd have to put that in the budget, send that up to DOT and ask for the match. And so, there's two obstacles that we would have before we could actually get that raise. And so, it will be quite a bit different, plus they're part-time, so they have different benefits and different personality issues that we'd have to discuss separately from the current union. So, I agreed, the petition was filed as a separate bargaining unit, and I was in agreement with that because of the different type of employee that they are.
When the petition was provided, did they show how many people were interested? Did they give a number, how many cards they received?
I believe there were eleven that supported the initial petition, yes. And I don't know if that's because that's all they needed, so they stopped gathering signatures, or if that's all they could get. And that was another reason why I was thinking that you all may want to make a decision on whether you would require an election or not.
So, if we voted for it, we don't require it. You vote against it, we would require it.
Correct.
Go to hell. See who all does. Look at the numbers.
I don't know why you would not allow them to vote. That's the way I would.
Right. Is there a union, Mr. Corio?
If they want it, they need to vote for it.
That's right.
All right.
Got to step up.
So, that'll be added. Then, under executive session, we have a limited personnel matter discussion regarding the county manager. I thought we'd just talk about Mr. Sari a little bit more.
Oh, good.
His negative.
I didn't want to be a liability.
That's true.
Now, you'll talk about him all out.
That's one thing I learned. You gotta talk about him here.
Then we have another...
My thinking to do.
Then we have another limited personnel matter discussion regarding employee of the sheriff's office. Then I'm going to add one more limited personnel matter discussion regarding the public works And then, lastly, we will have a pending litigation matter discussion regarding twenty thirteen incident in the sheriff's office.
What about the last one?
Did I not? Oh, sorry. I crossed that out of mine. That discussion was going to be regarding the union petition, but I believe I've given you the information that I would discuss, so we're going to remove that one.
Okay. Thank you very much, Abby. So, now we'll move into county reports. Sheriff, do you have a county report today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just wanted to report, we just finished with the rodeo this last weekend, and actually it was a great turnout, very minimal issues, really, it was as well maintained and coordinated. And I want to thank my staff and Cory Caminos for allowing us to use the buses again. That saved on our traffic going in and out of the rodeo grounds, but the staff did really well. We need to start preparing for next year because things are going to change in regards to the state helping us with the traffic control. So, we've already been in discussion, and we're going to figure out how we're going to end up doing that. But a great job to the staff that worked it. I want to go over some stat reports for the month of May. We had four hundred and seventy-one calls for service. We took a hundred and thirty-four reports, and we investigated eleven motor vehicle collisions. Pretty much, now that the weather's warming up, it's starting to pick up. Staff's been really busy. I short-handed three employees. We're currently in the process of background on some of the interviewees, so hopefully we'll have some new employees here soon. Other than that, it's just been busy, and, you know, again, all I can stress is thanks to the staff for picking up the extra slack and working the way they have been. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Any questions for the sheriff?
No.
Thank you very much. Alfred, what's going on? Have you seen me? Been a while, hasn't it been?
As of the report, Steve runs for you all, and right now, as of the, through the ninth, we are at eighty-seven point five eight percent of collections. We will be sending out our delinquent notices here at the end of the month again, and hopefully we'll be collecting a lot more to get to at least that ninety-six percent here at the end. Also, I just want to let you all know that every May that I do building inspection through the county, all the county buildings with New Mexico Association of Counties, and I had my inspection the other day, got my results, and everything, minor stuff, it's nothing major, and I just want to thank all the department heads, the detention center, road department, everybody here, Justin's crew for maintaining that. I will begin with the department heads and let them know what needs to be done in their departments. Like I said, it's minor. Mike is really a great help up there at the detention center, and I've gotten with Justin yesterday and gave him his list, and we'll be making sure everything gets repaired. So, one of the things that is on that report is safety committee, and I know that we've had one in the past, and then it just kind of dwindled down. I did send some emails out to all the department heads and elected officials, see if we could do a volunteer from one person in each department so that we can get this committee back on track. The association does give us a training, which I will be getting with Mr. Chavez and see if we, once we get the committee together. And, you know, hopefully we can get, you know, a good amount of people interested so that we can maybe on a quarterly basis or something, just keep up with these inspections to make sure that nothing does go relatively bad. And there was a couple of issues that need to be touched up and stuff, but it'll get done. So, I just want to thank everybody for their help. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, that's it. Questions? Okay. Rob?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I respectfully submit my report for May twentieth through June tenth, two thousand fourteen, Frank County Detention Facility. Item number one, policies and procedures, status remain the same. Item number two, our updated facility. We currently have two vacancies. Applicants are currently being reviewed. What we have done is Western New Mexico University Counseling Department, we partnered with them, the detention facility, to begin our re-entry program for the inmates. And what Western has been doing, they've been coming in several times during the week, and they're doing a detailed assessment on the inmates that are scheduled for release. This assessment will include substance abuse, employment, housing, and educational resources to the inmates. The program is a component of our inmate support program, which is House Bill sixty-three, and that was part of the, on the detention center's part of what we needed to do for re-entry for the inmates, to cut down on recidivism. One thing that I failed to put in the report was, we're also working with the Adult Probation and Parole Office. They also have a counselor, and the majority of our inmates, as you'll see in my report, are offenders of their release program from the Adult Probation and Parole. So, those two counselors are going to work in conjunction with one another, so hopefully we can do something with the inmates, and hopefully they won't be coming back into the facility. So, I think that's a great partnership that we formed with Western New Mexico University, and we want to thank them for doing that. They're coming in and providing that service for us, and they'll do that through the end of January, and then they're going to do, we'll do an evaluation on it and see if we can't get that, just make it a continued practice from Western. Item number three, our detention assessment, we're continually changing our assessments over the detention facility to make things better over there, so that status remains the same. Our training update, Sergeant Galindo has scheduled following training sessions. Our new, two newly hired officers are going to be certified in their OC spray, that's going to come in up on the twentieth. If you'd like to attend, formal invitation, if you'd like to come and see what that's all about, or participate, I'd be glad to do that. It's ugly. The cert supervisors, I think I mentioned last report, the Department of Corrections, they went ahead and told us that if we wanted to send them down there, so we took, we took their invitation to heart, and for the sixteenth, seventeenth, and nineteenth, we're going to send our cert supervisors and our officers, and they're going to go through the basic special entry and recovery training, and this is, this is when we have a hostage situation or we have to go in there and do some cell extractions and those types of things, critical incident management. Department of Corrections is going to provide all the equipment for the officers, and they're not going to charge us anything. The only thing that we may, the only cost we may have is if they stay late and we may have to put them up in a room for a couple of nights over in Ostrucis, but other than that, we're looking at, hopefully, just having them drive back and forth, but then I'm looking at the overtime issue too, for the number of officers that go in, so I'm looking at see what's going to be cost-effective, either, you know, paying them the per diem in a room as opposed to the overtime. But anyway, that is going to be great training, and we want to thank the Department of Corrections for doing that. Our intervention program, item number five, we continue to meet, in fact, we met in Deming last week, and we're still, we're still trying to improve the inmate support program. On our recognition awards program, the staff has gotten together, and what we've decided to do is we're just, we're taking donations amongst ourselves. We've purchased some coffee cups for our recognition program for the employees of the month that have Grant County Detention Center on them, so that's just a little thing, but our future events are going to be that what we want to do is, the Officer of the Year, Supervisor of the Year. It's usually held in May around the state, so we'd like to run, run that recognition in conjunction with the state, and then what we'd like to do is have a cookout for the families, and also, you're also cordially invited to attend that, and we'd like to do that at the facility if possible. Item number seven, our statistics, the daily population from May twentieth through June tenth, we had eighty-two inmates, that's thirty-one more than last month. The reason that increase is there is because, if you remember the last month's statistics, they only, they were only for a two-week period, so that's why they pretty much doubled, and this is for almost the whole month period. High population males were sixty-seven, which is four less than last month. Females is fifteen, which is one more than last month. So, for the month of May, we've had eighty-two inmates, which is four more than last month incarcerated and the hostility. Statistics shows a slight increase in the activity. Monthly agency arrest totals for May twentieth through June tenth, SCPD had a hundred and eight, New Mexico State Police had twenty-one, the Sheriff's Department had thirty-six, Santa Clara had three, Baird PD had fourteen, Hurley PD had ten, EAPO's office had two, and we had zero from the game and fish. Our detention facility conducted fifteen district court transports. Division one had twenty-two, Division two magistrate court had ten, municipal court Silver City had eight, Santa Clara had zero, Baird Municipal Court had zero, and Hurley Municipal Court, we had one transport. We had zero medical transports for this reporting period, and also, the transports, total number of transports from May twentieth to June tenth was fifty-six as compared to forty-five last month. Our utilization and occupancy offense levels, there were fifteen felonies, fifty-three misdemeanors, and then the probation and other violation warrants, total ninety-three. So, there was a hundred and sixty-one. Total hours in custody is eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven hours, the average length of stay was seven point three days, and all the reporting indicated there was an increase compared to last month. Any other questions?
Any questions for Mike?
I don't guess we're getting any money from the APL for their holds yet. I don't guess we're receiving any money from the APO, from the state, for holding their prisoners?
As far as defending is concerned and cost? No, sir. The only, the only way that, what we've, we're trying to get with the Association of Counties, and the only thing that we get is that the end of the year, we have to do that submission to the state, but it's not anywhere near what we're having to pay for the number of APO holds that we get. It's not right.
Are they still being funded still?
Yes, sir.
In the legislature?
Yes, sir, it is, and it's still coming out of the state, it's still coming out of the legislature, but it's, the smaller facilities, it doesn't even come close to what the cost is to hold those, that and the juveniles. I think that's what's really eating up our budget right now, is we have no control over whenever juveniles are incarcerated, and also the length of time and the cost, because it does cost more to house and transfer the, transport the juveniles.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Well, we've actually been trying to close up quite a few of the grant programs that we have, trying to get all the reimbursements done, trying to get everything closed. We did close our EDA strategic final grant, and of course, we were highly encouraged to apply for more monies, is what I got from, they said our, that our, our project went real well, that we were able to provide a lot of bang for the bucks, I guess what you want to call it. A strategic plan, grant was solely for a strategic plan, we were able to do with the money as a market analysis, a PER for industrial park site analysis, so they were really pleased with our overall project, and so, so we were, the last words I heard, we were highly encouraged to apply for some more money, so that was a really good thing. North Hurley, we, I understand that they're going to do a final inspection on North Hurley project. That's all we have left of that project. I'd like to thank Justin, of course, who's been, been working pretty closely with those guys over there. I think that they actually sent the first round of billing out from the city of Bayreuth, so that project is pretty much complete, and we're, and pretty much on, it's working just fine, so that's a good thing. We also have the Colonias project over there in North Hurley that we were awarded last year. Engineership is continuing with their drainage analysis, and we're going to skin gain the preliminary engineering on alignment and drainage, and so, so we're a full-blown engineering project for North Hurley, North Hurley Road. I would like to report that we were awarded the Colonias award last week for Rosedale Road. We're awarded six hundred and ninety-two thousand for the improvements to Rosedale Road. The total improvements are right at a million dollars. We have a lot of in-kind on that project, and that's due to the fact that we have a milling machine, and we're going to do our own milling and our own, we do our own low-water crossings, concrete structures, that type of stuff like that, so. What we tried to do, the road projects are really difficult to come by, so what we tried to do is increase our in-kind match, to try and make it a little bit more appealing and score higher on our application, and it worked, and so, we were funded. Overall, Grant County did pretty good as a whole. The city of Bayreuth received about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Though Santa Clara was actually awarded the project that we had submitted for CDBG a couple of years ago. We assisted them with, trying to provide them all the information that we had. They were, they did apply, and they were awarded, talking about the water line extension from Arenas Valley to, to the city of Santa Clara, or the village of Santa Clara, so we'd like to, kudos to them, and getting that connection so that they can have some of their issues resolved. Of course, Tana Silver City got two projects funded, right, both right at half a million dollars, so, parallel to domestic, domestic, almost a half a million dollars for improvements to their water lines. So, all in all, out of the overall fourteen million dollars in the Colonias fund, we, Grant County, received about three million of those, so we're being represented well, and at the thought, we did pretty good in the Colonias fund, so. Of course, to work on the EWI study, getting closer to the crunch time to see what exactly the Interstate Stream Commission is going to decide on, whether or not they're going to decide on a diversion project. The ten percent engineering has been done. I have some recommendations to the Interstate Stream Commission. I have some recommendations to the Interstate Stream Commission on, on the location of a potential diversion. I, I wouldn't say I was on discipline, but I have some questions, and the location of diversion project, and overall cost, it was going to, to get to bring the water to where they could actually store it. And I also had some questions on, on delivery, and the system of how they, they choose to deliver water. I asked them to look into, to using solar power. There's still a lot of incentives to be able to utilize solar, solar power, and I also was able to, to look into some, some methods that they're using in California, and that the actual pipeline has generating mechanisms within the pipeline to actually generate power. So you generate power within the pipeline, and it's able to go ahead and, and add some additional energy to, to the pipeline, so that, it actually, it costs initially, but it actually reduces the actual O&M costs and the operating costs once you, once you get to transferring the water, so. So we're still, we're still in there pretty heavy. The Hill San Francisco Water Commission has a meeting next Tuesday, and at 10 o'clock here in the commission meeting room, and so we're hoping that the Interstate Stream Commission considers, of course, all projects, and, including our project there in Bayard, or actually in, in Santa Clara, I guess, probably closer. We did ask the Interstate Stream Commission to consider using the effluent again, and they are considering using the effluent for some, some wetlands upstream of what we'd consider a reservoir. They're going to look into some, some more engineering and, and trying to use that clean effluent in some wetlands upstream from there, using natural means to, to clean it to 100% by the time it gets into the reservoir, so. So we're still, we're still working with those, that's a, that's, that's the chief of Grand County, the EAWSA, and, and they're supposed to make a decision by November, so. So it's pretty tight in there. And if, and if any of the other commissioners have any questions about, about what's happening, I can certainly fill them in, and because there's, there's quite a bit happening, and, and the Hill San Francisco is, is working on some things to try and, and maybe contract for the, for the water, do some things for, to make some contractual agreements with the Secretary of Interior, so. It's getting pretty complicated, and so it's, I can come in here and give a two-hour presentation probably on, on what all is going to happen in the near future, so, so maybe the commission wishes we can discuss it.
Okay.
We've also been working on, with a DOT on a statewide transportation plan. There's a lot of discussion on not only multimodal transportation, which includes, you know, Corte Caminos, a transit plan, but also roads and, and economic development and, and different things like that, so I think it's, it's a good thing. I think it's, they do it every 10 years, I think they need to do it a little bit sooner than that. We're, we're continuing to lose in revenues in, in the transportation process, and, and so we have made it known that we are lacking in transportation funds. All of our monies go to the state, or to the federal government, and it trickles down, and by the time it gets here, there's no money. And so, but they didn't inform us until 2020, when, when the rail runner and, and the bonds they issued for that and the, and the, we're going to have to wait until then to get our local, money is back, so. And I'm assuming probably by then they're probably starting to find some other place to use it, so. But anyway.
Just don't plan on getting it back, that's what you've got to plan on.
And other than that, just working, of course, with the Mexico Finance Authority, trying to get those things done.
Our ICIP is due when?
Our ICIP is due in September, and, but I would hope that we can have, we're going to try and have some public meetings before then. We have our, we have our ICIP plan now, if anybody's interested, they can take a look at it. I think that, I mentioned last time that we had about 48 million dollars in, in potential projects. They're all greatly related to, to our, to our county infrastructure, so if people would like to, to maybe bring some things to the forefront, we, we're probably going to have those meetings prior to a work session or to, to a regular meeting, and that way, maybe we can get some participation in.
I would strongly encourage you to probably have one in July and one in August, before we vote in, we vote September.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important also, so, because we apply for CDBG projects, we want our ICIP to reflect some of those public participations.
But will we vote at the end of August for the September, or?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's just an approval, usually it's before September. It's, I think September 30th.
September 30th, oh, so we vote September, okay. Yeah, I'd have one in July and August.
Okay.
Anything else? That's all I've got. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll start with Cindy, since she was here, with the DWI program. As of July 1st, 2014, the new texting law will go into effect, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Texting while driving, any person should not read, view, or text messages, or manually type on a handheld mobile communication device for any purpose, or drive in a vehicle, except to summon medical emergency help, hands-free only. So she's going to try to get that, you know, out to the public, maybe in the paper.
You can't dial a phone number? That's what, what you just said.
Yeah, exactly. So this is just kind of a synopsis of what, what the law states, if you want to read to it and get, get into more with that. On the compliance side, there was 203 clients, 56 clients are in outpatient therapy, 36 are either in jail or under a warrant, one is residential treatment, nine are in AA, and 13 are the alcohol bracelets, and three are on GPS. Municipal State Police had, starting seven projects from March till May, they were able to, 70 DWIs in, I think in March, four in April, and three so far in May, so, you know, that's part of the enforcement. On the prevention side, the DWI program, we're at the, at the prom, at Cobra's Prom, where they get the breathalyzer tests before, before and then after the prom, as well as people leaving, so, and they had no issues whatsoever, so it's kind of, not surprising, but, you know, it's amazing that these kids are taking heed of, in events like this, that, you know, that they're restraining themselves from alcohol abuse. On Cobra Caminos, the rodeo was obviously the big thing, there was a total of 464 passengers, the big nights were Wednesday and Saturday night. The Horseman Association gives us a donation annually to run the buses, they informed us very late that they were not going to be able to do that, so in conversations with the sheriff, and also with the chairman, the sheriff really encouraged me to go ahead and run the buses, because it was going to help his guys out, the amount of traffic that was going to be at the rodeo, so I'm going to thank him and credit him for that. So, what else did I have for Cobra Caminos? That's, that's basically it, we're just kind of busy. Cobra Cantinas ran Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights also for the rodeo, so that helped out, I don't have those numbers from, from Cobra Cantinas. Senior program, we've got some site managers that we're trying to fill, one in member service, one at the senior center, we're working on that with Terry, to try to get that resolved and get site manager there. The other thing is the Santa Clara Center will be, have to be shut down to install the new hood ranges, which need to be in. We're giving it a two-week, I don't have the exact dates yet, but we're, it should only take a week, but with any construction project, you want to give yourself some leeway just in case it's going to go longer.
Can I remind you of Terry?
Yes, Terry's working on all that, he had a meeting with them yesterday, he was also going to meet with Baird to help cover that, so we've got all that in place, Commissioner, so that we can make sure that the residents are, are still going to be fed. Public Works, got a whole list of stuff from Public Works, you know, we had the, finally got done with the rails at the ballfields, had the parking lot finally painted and the stripes for parking, that's, that came out really nice. Working on the action plan for the airport, the one you're going to pass, the emergency action plan, but we're also going to have a kickoff meeting on July 15th for the stakeholders, kind of at the airport with the state, the county, and the Forest Service on long-term and short-term plans for the airport. It's going to be a luncheon on July 15th, if any one of you commissioners wants to attend that meeting, please let me know, so we can at least get that information over to the, to the committee.
What do we have in there?
July 15th, it'll be from 12 to 1:00 at the conference center. And again, it's just a kickoff meeting, one of four meetings that we're going to have to see where we go forward with the airport. Let's see, the Public Works Department helped Rob during the election to move machines around, get them back into, you know, take them to the voting centers and get them back, so I want to thank Justin and his crew for that. Every year that, that happens, and they're able to, they work long hours during that day, probably don't get home until 10, 11 o'clock at night, so, but I want to thank Rob for, for helping him out with that. The courthouse, we've done some painting at the courthouse, trying to get that, you know, like any other old building that we have, that the county owns, and most counties do, the infrastructure, just, you know, every, every time you turn around, you know, there's vehicle problems, electrical problems, you know, but they're made for the paint, and we're just supplying the, the workers to get it done. The old sheriff's building, there was an appraisal done with the state, so they're working with the state on a new roof, a new HVAC system, it's going to run at around 150,000. The appraisal came in at 150, and if approved, the state will cover that cost. So, I mean, I know the county's renting it for a buck, I think, a year, or whatever it is, but hopefully that building will be, have a new roof on it and some new HVAC systems. On the fire site, we've had a couple of fires last week, one was Wednesday up in the Little Volment area. You know, South Los Angeles Fire Department was able to jump on that real quick, also with some assistance from Silver Fire, to put that out. We also had another fire in, in the forest on Saturday. I spoke with Mr. David Dean, this aviation staff officer for the Forest Service, they were able to put a seat, what you call a seat is aircraft, one aircraft over the fire, as quickly as they could to put that out, it was about three acres, but they were able to jump on that. There was some, I, I don't know how this all, how that got started, but I heard it was some kind of blast from, from somewhere, I don't know, have the details on that, but they were able to get on that. It was just west of the monastery, up in, in the forest, but it was on Forest Service property, so they were able to jump on that and get that out. Other than that, commissioners, unless you have any questions, that's all I have right now.
Any questions, Sean?
Just thank you for keeping the airport down and ready to go on the weekend, and I know I called you about the fire, and you were hard at work, so we appreciate you volunteering your job.
One of the things that the, the guy on duty got called out for reserve, and the other guy in his place also had a commitment on Saturday, so I just had to step up there, but it was fun. But, but we are working hard on the airport, we're also working, real quick, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holmes, we're working on the, the lease agreements and what we have out there, and how we have, you know, the airport manager has left or is retiring, he'll be done here pretty quick, I think maybe at the end of June or 1st of July, and so with that, you know, you start digging into all the stuff and, and looking at everything that's at the airport, and hopefully we can get our arms wrapped around everything that was going on out there, and see if we can continue the service for at the airport, including the fuel fund. So unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
So it looks like it. Okay. Thanks very much. Linda, do you have anything else to add today?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Camusia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to update you on the fuel tank status, and we did, we're in line to purchase right now. We have state approval for the emergency procurement now, we were waiting for that, and now I'm negotiating the terms with the providers of the fuel and the trucks. It's a little strange for them, because we're only approved for about three months under the emergency procurement, and then we have to start on the real bid process that we normally have to go through for these types of things, so that's a little weird for them, so they're sending it to their legal, but hopefully we'll head back soon and buy some fuel.
Anything else?
I did want to just give a shout out to the department heads and the directors and elected officials, I just really appreciate the help that you guys have all given me, I mean, I definitely noticed that everyone stepped up and have been extremely helpful, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Camusia, do you have anything to add today?
First of all, I'd like to just say thank you to the voters of Grant County for getting me re-elected, and I'll continue to do the best I can. I, I really appreciate the votes that we did get, I think the, the people have spoken, so I really do appreciate that very much. I, I guess we're doing some things correct, so I appreciate that very much. And I also wanted to request that we get a sound person to control recordings and the sound, because I know that there's, in the past, there's been some people that come and bring and set up their recorders, and it muffles up the CATS TV and their recording, so I'd like to see if we can get someone in charge of, or somebody that these, that people have to report to before they come in and record the meetings. We don't want to stop recording the meetings, of course, but we want to put some kind of control that's not going to affect CATS or, or any other station, or each other. Okay? I'd like to see that, maybe put on one of the meetings next month.
Maybe I can talk with Lori about how they would like to approach it.
Exactly, I think they, they should probably be in the forefront, being that, you know, it affects their, their system. I think that's all I've got, just thank you very much for, for those votes we got on the election day. Thank you again.
Okay. And I, I don't have anything today either, I got a few votes too, I appreciate it, but my, my race was a little easier than yours.
I voted for you.
Twice. Okay, Mr. Clerk, you're going to have to deal with that one now. So at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All those favorites say five, say nine.
Five.